I'd like to call this District of Clearwater Committee of the Hole Meeting on Tuesday, November 18th. A meeting to order. Are there any, any late items to be added? Okay, could I have someone move in second the option of the agenda? Counselor. Counselor McKenzie. There's a, is there any declarations of known conflict of interest or pecuniary interest? Are there's no delegations? Are there any errors or admissions in the minutes of the August 19th? If, if not, could I have a mover and a seconder? Counselor McKenzie, Counselor Herring. No unfinished business. And just Counselor Sim, I see you up there, would you make big waving motions so I catch my attention just in case you want to say something? I will probably miss it.
Yeah, thanks very much. Is this, I just want to make sure that this microphone's working.
Yes, it is.
Thank you.
Sounds good. So I'll move on to new business with staff reports and it'll be financial plans, the community recreation fees and charges.
Good afternoon. Chairperson Counselor, Acting Mayor Counselor Frizzle. Counsel, so sorry, I apologize. Today I'd like to bring forward the Fees and Charges Amendment for discussion for counsel. The Fees and Charges changes will be the community recreation fees, the ballpark and advertising and the water and sewer fund or fees and the septic receiving fees. Last year, the district updated the fees and charges to include the utility fees and related schedules. Also, last year, the district updated the North Thompson Sportsplex fees for the first time in the last seven years. So we're continuing on with that process. This, this year, we will continue to move towards the direction of consolidating more and more of our fees and charges into this bylaw. And as that, what that does is actually it improves efficiency when you're updating the fees and charges. And it also is a little bit more transparent for the public to see all our fees and charges in one bylaw rather than in the other different bylaws that they occur. So today we're bringing to you the recreation fees and charges and the utility fees and charges. When we were developing the recreation fees and charges, we spoke with the manager of facility and parks and with Recreation, Culture and Events Coordinator to develop these fees. The fees that have been changed in Schedule C, so Schedule C is on, I just noticed that they were a little bit backwards in your agenda, but Schedule C starts on page 12 of your agenda. One of the first things that we did is we updated the name of that schedule from NTSP to Community Recreation to include the North Thompson Sportsplex as well as other community recreation programming. The second thing we did is we added a community recreation policies, administration policies. And what that does is it includes some financial control words or policies around refunds, how, how good punch cards are for, that you can't transfer your punch cards from one individual to another individual and those kinds of things. It also has a few guiding principles there as well. And what this also does is it, it provides transparency to the public as well as it provides a consistent approach to these administrative policies. The second thing we did is we looked at, on page three, you see the NTSP rates. We changed that from a annual basis to, to a season basis. And we have the dates there from, from August to July. Because we have the hockey school early.
Oh, yes.
So we didn't just use the winter season, I used the whole, a whole year, but I changed it up a bit. And the second thing we did is we started increasing the prices. For certain of these prices, we increased only the CPI of 2.6%. So the CPI increases were the hourly ice hockey rental, the drive floor rentals, both categories there, and the curling club fees. So that will impact the minor hockey as well as figure skating with the hourly rentals. Secondly, punch cards. The punch cards currently are at $120 with the GST. We have increased that to $130 for the drop-in skating, curling and hockey. We've left the drop-in skating per session at $15 or $6, depending on who is coming to the, to the ice rink. Then finally, on page 15, that is our new schedule, which includes a community recreation programming. That includes drop-in sports, punch cards for wellness classes as well as for drop-in sports, swimming lessons and kids camp. And other programming there includes those contractor-based programs we have such as yoga. Those programmer, those program, programs are going to be at a variable rate depending on what the contractor is charging us. So we have a, just a little bit of a one-liner there to guide us through that process. Other schedules we looked at was the Kappasitsky Ballpark and advertising, and both of those we've increased at 2.6%. And finally, we have a, a resolution for council. So this is for, for discussion to, for the committee whole to recommend to council if they approve these changes in the fees and charges. And what will happen next time is we'll bring the whole bylaw forward. So this is an opportunity for council to have that conversation.
Are there any questions? Counselor Herring.
So on page 12 in 1.3.1, it says the cost recovery ratio established for the NTSP building. What is that ratio?
We have not established that at this point. Currently, the NTSP cost recovery ratio is like, it's subsidized, around 75% of it subsidized. And similar with the recreation programming, it's subsidized right around that, 75, 80%. It depends on what's happening during the year, but it is heavily subsidized.
And I, like, I think the reason that's of interest to me is I'd like to see when our costs go up, if we had sort of like that ratio established, so we can say whatever, 2.6% CPI increase, 75% of that is going to be borne by the general taxpayer, 25% of that is going to be borne by the specific users.
Yeah.
Right? So we can kind of apply that ratio directly and it's predictable for the users at least. They can say if, if costs are going up, we as users will be responsible for 25% of that increase. If that's the model council wishes to pursue, but that's kind of, you know, I'd like to see that ratio kind of spelled out.
Sort of visible.
Yeah.
Yeah. Any other questions? Counselor McKenzie?
Thank you, Acting Mayor Frizzle. In regards to this advertising and the things for the ice rink, family sponsorships, is that?
What page are you on, sir?
Sorry, that'd be page 10 of your agenda. That's not for family skating sponsorship or?
Counselor Sim, do you have a question?
I do, actually. So I just wondered, I wasn't quite clear from the report, how much is the arena wall advertising? And that would be for the curling as well as the hockey skating rink as well as the ballpark?
My understanding is the curling wall advertising is not to, the revenues from that goes to the curling club? And the hockey is as well going, and they alternate between figure skating and the minor hockey?
Okay, and then Kappasitsky Park?
That would be for the District of Clearwater. There is a line item there, advertising ballpark, $3780.
Okay. Right. Okay. And then my supplemental is the curling fees stated in the report, is this the monthly amount payable by the curling club? And how many months does the club pay on average?
The season there is listed from October 15th to March 15th.
Okay.
If they would like to extend that by a month either side, I've broken it down to a daily fee.
Okay. Okay. All right. And Acting Mayor Frizzle, if I could ask another one, please? Earlier in the, earlier in the year, council received a report showing that the 2024-2025 ice usage was at a three-year high of 1,418 hours. So do I understand that using maybe those hours that, and with the fee increases on users, it would generate about $3,700? Is, is that what this would all translate to?
I haven't done that math.
So I, I guess, all right, just to, to do it, what I'm trying to figure out is, is that we have a small amount of users who are paying for, and to Counsel Herring's point, are they, is this increase to pay for more of the operational costs? Or where, where is this, where is this being targeted for?
To cover increases, like it's a consumer pricing, it's, we had quite a large increase last year. And so this year, we, our staff is recommending a consumer pricing that although the staffing itself will increase by 4% this year. So it's up to council, if they wish for us to increase it further or reduce it, it's up to council.
I guess what I'm, I'm wondering is, is it, is the only option to look at the user? Or is there an opportunity to look at revising the advertising model? Is there a way to look at expanding the uses of the facility? So for example, in Canmore, they offer Learn to Curl for tourism groups. Or maybe the curling rink is used as, you know, a different sort of pop-up market for summer tourism? Like, is there other ways that we can look at expanding revenue models as opposed to just putting it on the users?
Certainly, we could bring that back if that's what you would like, if council would like that. Another opportunity is, and we didn't look at it too much here, but hockey school often, often attracts a lot of out-of-community participants. So outside of Clearwater or outside of Area A, potentially we could increase rates just for those participants of hockey school. That's one way, but it's not going to be a lot.
Yeah, and I thi, I think that that's the whole point. I think that what I'm just seeing here, based on the, the nominal user fee numbers, and you've just cited that, you know, just staff wages are 4% and this is significantly less. Really, the responsibility of council is how do we keep pace with increasing costs that don't always have to come right down to the users, given that there's wider benefit to the facility? And maybe other ways that we can use it to generate further income? As a, so I just, it's just a reluctance about just the user.
Mr. Johnson, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So there are some opportunities, but they're kind of few and far between. During the ice season, the hockey rink, for example, is used almost every weekend for tournaments. So there's not a lot of incremental availability to try to deal with, at least during prime time. The, the concern that we're trying to address by saying, let's adjust this by CPI, is that we don't have to do a big adjustment every five or 10 years where users say, how do we handle this? This is crazy. This weighs it a smaller amount on a regular basis. Does it cover the full cost of what the increasing costs are? No, it clearly doesn't, as we already talked about the 4%. But the point of it is, is to try to do it regular and avoid some of that sticker shock. The comments about advertising, th, those are great comments. I think it's a, advertising is one area that we can look to. There's been some suggestion that maybe we try to develop an advertising package where prospective advertisers could buy a spot and it would cover off in the ballpark and over at the arena facilities. So there's some possibilities there we need to play with. But if anything, that's, that's likely to be a bit of a one-time bump if people want to do advertising, it's not going to generate near the revenue that user fees would or that obviously increased taxation does.
Anything else, Counselor Sim?
Yeah, and I think it's just a really good proactive discussion to have. So I'm looking at, like, I appreciate that there's heavy use for the hockey skating arena, but I am hearing the fact that the, the curling ice comes out, let's say, by April. So we've got that May-June, sort of July, August, maybe, four months, large space. What, what else could that be generated for? Like, what are our other opportunities where we're growing some revenue rentals? Or just to reimagine the space as useful? And maybe even of greater value to the broader community? Like, maybe it's a giant art park or something in the summer? I, I just, it's just seems that the operational costs are something that we've got to keep, keep an eye on without just that finite group.
I'm wondering if there's not a way to just put it out to the community that that space is available so that they could rent the space? I don't know that people think of using that space between April and August because we've never done it before. So I wonder if that would be just something for us to put out there? That it's available and people can organize their own event, whatever that is, or a conference or whatever. That's an option.
Well, one of the comment feedbacks that we get, you know, as a community in the summer, for our summer visitors, is what is there to do in the evening in Clearwater?
Yep.
Well, is there something to do in the evening in Clearwater utilizing that space?
Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, good ideas. I think staff could bring a report back, do some thinking about, here's some options or directions we could possibly go towards. Anytime we talk about incremental uses of facilities, particularly at a time where they're non-staffed, then you're facing the hurdle of, you've got to have a facility usage that's going to at least cover the cost of staffing and then contribute something on top of that, which makes it quite challenging. And sometimes there's others, potential summertime sports. Often lacrosse likes to go into facilities during the summertime. But it's the same hurdle where, A, you've got to have enough of an interest, of enough people consistently that it pays for the cost of keeping that facility open. But it's, it's definitely an area where we do have facility space that could be utilized in time and space. So perhaps we bring a report back around that, plus some concepts around advertising. Just about, here's some alternatives where we're thinking about. I, I almost think we need to pull that out of the budget window, which is a bit time constrained, and bring that back over, a, as kind of the budget is getting put to bed, bring that back up. Here's some, some more ideas around how do we get better utilization out of our resources that we already have, right?
Yeah, I agree. Any, go ahead, Counselor Herring.
Yeah, and I think one thing just further to that conversation I want to flag is that commercial kitchen in the cafeteria or whatever you call it, the, the kitchen in there anyways, I think really has some opportunity. We have a farmer's market that runs all summer and commercial kitchen space is something people could probably use to be able to produce goods for the farmer's market. So it might be an available food security tool in an interesting way. And then that wouldn't require tremendous staff input, you know? I think, like, alternate uses don't necessarily have to be open to the wider public. We can also target smaller sort of businesses and interest groups, I think.
Thinking outside the box is what you're think, doing. Anything else? Okay, so there is the recommendation. How does everybody feel about that after that discussion?
I'd be willing to support the recommendation, but I would like to see that cost recovery ratio as something we establish. Just to really give a, a perspective as, here's why we're putting this on the users. Here's the percentage of our 4% increase that this year will go towards, you know, that will be covered by the general public, sort of thing. Just so we can articulate that difference.
And what the, what you brought up, Counselor Sim, is that sort of a separate consideration? That shouldn't be involved in this, I don't think? Am I right?
Um, well, I think the fact that we are in committee of the whole, I, I mean, for me, I think that, you know, there's some, there, I think that the increases, they're modest. I wouldn't, I would personally like to see a five-year plan so that there was real predictability for our users in particular. Like, what is this going to look like for the next five years? Otherwise, it just feels like it's year after year, it's just chipping away. And I would, I would really like to see this brought back to a council meeting in December. And maybe, maybe members of the community who might get wind of this have got some other thoughts and ideas. So.
Go ahead, Mr. Johnson.
So I think bringing it back in December is realistic, except like, my conclusion, God, is we should not be holding off on our fee adjustment until that point in time because we need fee certainty to put into next year's budgets and all the rest, right? And we need to publish these rates. And in particular, as we move into some of the other fees, they have to be set before the, before the New Year starts. So as, but as far as bringing back an ideas report on how do we generate more business out of those facilities? I look to the Director of Finance to see if, is the December date rational for that, or what are your thoughts?
I'm not sure if we have the resources to manage that at this point, to bring it back and do all the research that's required.
Yeah. That, that's probably a really fair comment to do, that it is, it is a bit of a tight timeline. I think with that, as far as the recommendation, my recommendation, it would be brought back for the December meeting. I think that the meeting is December 4th, is it, or am I wrong on that?
December 2nd. December 2nd.
So December 2nd, I would like to see this just bubble up into the community, but I wouldn't feel comfortable bringing it forward as noted on the agenda for this afternoon.
Yeah, so that, that is the recommendation that in December, on December the 2nd, I would bring the Complete Fees and Charges bylaw forward to council to review and vote.
And so what is it on the main council meeting then? What, what, help me understand the difference.
Today, there, it's not on the main council meeting.
It is, actually.
It is.
Oh, to, yeah, it's just moving it, it's not voting on the bylaw.
It's just moving forward on making the amendments, right? Go ahead.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Mr. Prime.
Counselor Sim through the chair. So what it is, is the committee of the whole can't necessarily direct staff, that's at the purview of council. So the committee of the whole is making the recommendation to council to bring this back forward for the first three readings in the first meeting of December.
Okay. Thank you very much, I really appreciate that.
Okay, so you've made the motion. And?
Counselor Herring through the chair, was there an amendment to the motion? I know you added some.
Correct, yeah, the amendment would be that the, it'd be presented along with the, what do you call it, the ratio?
Cost recovery.
Cost recovery ratio.
Is there a seconder to that? Counselor McKenzie? All those in favor? Opposed? Counselor Sim opposed. Okay, so moving on to 8.2, the utility rates for 2026.
So as part of our financial planning process, we go through the utility rates for 2026. The utility rates include sewer, water and septic fees. Just a little bit of a sneak peek, peek here is that staff is currently recommending 10% increases for water and sewer and a 2.6% increase for septic fees. A few highlights of the water and sewer funds or areas. On the water side, the, the, we have 848 customers of water. Twenty, in 2025, our annual rate was $488.16. Total revenue collected was $790,000. And operating costs were $575,000. The water fund does have a little bit of debt of about $100,000. The infrastructure master plan has about $18 million of capital to be done in the next few years, 10 years or so. The capital reserve for water is at $379,000. We did develop a operating reserve, but we have no deposits into that operating reserve at the moment. And the DCCs for water is $140,000. So that is your quick financial highlights for the water fund. For the sewer fund, we, much smaller customers, at 200 customers, the rate is about $643. And you can see the revenues and the operating expenses there. The infrastructure master plan, we have about $19 million in capital. The capital reserve is $316,000. The operating reserve, we have, I mean, these reserves are, are increasing and they're getting quite healthy there at $131,000. And the DCC reserve is only about $28,000. And the purpose of this slide is just to kind of demonstrate that although we have a lot of projects, the funding isn't always necessarily there to get to the, and it seems like it's overwhelming at the moment. But when I did a review of the projects we had on our infrastructure master plan, I was, I could see that we're making progress. And, and always the formula is a little bit different. So let's just start with water. Here you can see, this was a list of the infrastructure master plan, the $18 million. And you can see that we've done the water, the leakage assessment. We have our backup to the wells. The road supply main for, and it's in between 2026 and 2028. And this project is funded as a combination of grant and reserves, $300,000 in reserves, but 2.9 in grant if we get that grant. We have the water renearing project. It is scheduled between 2026 and 2027, and that is 100% funded through grants, as long as we don't go over the budget. And the Strawberry Flats PRV replacement is scheduled for 2029. And currently, we're funding that one in the financial plan with debt and reserves. So you can see that we, you know, out of the eleven projects are listed there, five of these are in, uh two are complete and three are in the financial plan. So we are making progress, even though eighteen million dollars sounds like a lot of money, which it is. If we can continue to look for grants to help support these projects, it's one way to move forward with them.
So just a question on the Sunshine Valley, I know you didn't mention it, but I thought we removed that from.
It's still part of our infrastructure master plan, I'm not sure if we've completely removed it up out of that.
Okay. Oh, okay, thank you.
So so this graph demonstrates how the district is covering their water costs. So the dark purple is the total user rate rates. And the green is the operating expenses. And the gap between those is what would go into the reserves. So we are covering, our revenues are covering our expenses and the remaining amounts are going into reserves. User fees have increased um uh a bit, five percent per year for between twenty eighteen and twenty twenty-three. We had a large increase in twenty twenty-four of fifteen percent. In twenty-five, we have an increase of ten percent. And in twenty twenty-six, we're recommending another ten percent. To build those reserves for the projects that we haven't, we need some reserves for some of these projects. And whatever we decide to do, the council decides to do in the future, and prioritize those projects.
And question, and what do we have in reserve right now for the water?
I know that.
Sorry.
I know that this uh financial plan will um contribute about two hundred and eighty thousand dollars.
Okay, good.
Currently, in the water reserve, we have three three hundred and seventy-nine thousand.
And this here, this extra ten percent, this year will add another two hundred?
Yes.
Okay.
Two hundred and eighty-seven thousand to water reserves.
Thank you.
So what this means in terms of rates, monthly water rates, is that it would cost uh individual, individual or or customers another four, four dollars and seven cents a month. It would move from forty dollars to forty-four dollars or forty-four dollars and seventy-five cents per month. So the the quarterly billing will increase by twelve dollars and twenty cents so to one hundred and thirty-four dollars and twenty-four cents. And the annual increase will be forty-eight dollars, so almost fifty dollars to five hundred and thirty-four dollars and ninety-eight cents. This is the monthly water rates.
Um, just a question on that, if I could?
Yes, go ahead.
So the, it says in this particular slide, which is just great, that the draft financial plan twenty twenty-six to twenty twenty-thirty fees and charges. And it stops at twenty twenty-six. So it, are you proposing that this is the last increase for until twenty thirty?
No. I'm not proposing that. These are the increases for the fees and charges. The financial plan, we would build in an extra ten percent going forward.
Per year?
Per year.
Heading for full cost recovery?
Well, we are full cost recovery. We, we, you can see we're doing full cost recovery, but we're not really covering our capital costs. And that's, that's this list here that we're trying to um work towards.
Go, Counselor Herring, go ahead.
Well, something I'm wrestling with here is future community water infrastructure that we need doesn't necessarily only benefit current users of the water system. Right, am I understanding that right? So if we're planning to do a Sunshine Valley reservoir, for example, the people who are currently paying into the water system, we're asking them to contribute more so that we can build our reserves to provide water services to customers who aren't them. Am I understanding that correctly? So it feels to me like asking, like, cost recovery is the goal of the the model, and that makes sense. And I understand that some level of, obviously, reserves need to be built to repair and maintain the system. But where I lose the thread is expanding the system.
Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So that's an interesting question, and of course, the reverse. The reverse of that question is our DCC conversations. Because DCC conversations are all about, let's make sure that future developments, uh the appropriate amount is charged to the developers and to that new development. So the combination of DCCs and sustainable capital taxation is how you cover off one hundred percent of those future costs in theory. Now, we balance that off because we do get grants where we, and we have a number of grants that, we was a report not too long ago, reporting back to council of grants that we have applied for. One of the interesting things that happens in the grants is that when you get a grant, it's always, your grant is for this stack of work with this budget, and that's it. There might be a small contingency built in, but that's the amount of the grant. If there is an overage on the grant, it is one hundred percent at the responsibility of the municipality. So that creates a need for some, having some of that financial um reserves to be able to cover that off. In addition, the, we often see the capital um requirements based on the projects. But where we tend to get very light in reporting back to council is, what about repairs when you have a line that's been sitting in the grounds and for twenty-five or thirty years and it needs to be replaced? Those typically are not good candidates for grants because you're just trying to take care of your existing infrastructure. There's no real housing benefit to those type of grants. So those are the ones we also need to capture. And one of the areas where we're, we're not fully developed yet is on our asset management program. And asset management asks that question. So it's, of everything you own, needs to have a replacement plan in place. We know, we know that we're not there yet and we did, and that it's a goal that we need to work towards. But the only thing we can say for sure, while we don't know what that end number is, we know it's a very large number and that we don't have the reserves necessary to cover that off. So I, I think the needs really come from future development, from asset management of replacing your existing projects. And then, of course, sometimes new things come al- come along, but just kind of catch you by surprise a little bit. Like water metering. It's not a brand-new concept, but the grant was out there. Council took the step of saying, yes, water metering is a great project. And, but there's still potentially some financial impact from that, because it's the same thing. If we go over price on that, well, we have to pick up the overage, right? So it's, it's, it's not just, are we putting it on the backs of new development? Or why is our existing taxpayers being expected to pay for development? It's a little bit more complicated than that.
Go ahead.
To be clear, it's, we're not talking about putting it on the backs of existing taxpayers. We're talking about putting it on the backs of existing user fees.
Yeah, yeah.
Right, so these are people who are already paying for the service they receive. But we're asking them to pay for future ser- services that other people will receive. Whereas like, to me, taxation makes sense as a source for that revenue, because those are future benefits that we will all enjoy as a community. If there is a new neighborhood with water and sewer, that might bring new people here, might help us support our community. Whereas someone who is currently using the water system, asking them to pick up that bill, to me, that's, that feels like a narrow subset of the community, when it's, what, two hundred homes or whatever, in the case of some of our service. We're putting that large-scale Sunshine Valley development on the backs of a very small amount of people. We've already taken that out of the DCC bylaw, right? So I, I guess what I'm wrestling with here is how do we, how do we identify what is a community benefit? And what is a benefit to the individual user of the water system? So something like metering is very exciting to me, because we can say, here's your use, here's the load you are putting on the system. We can adjust fees accordingly in the future, right? Whereas something like this makes you feel really uncomfortable, like we're, we're putting disproportionate impact on a small group of people. Whose whose use may not reflect, you know, the overall benefit kind of thing.
And I think that's a great conversation that does need to happen, about where does that get charged? Because you're right, particularly when you think about our sewer system, where we have two hundred and eighteen users. We can't expect the sewer system to cover off the cost of all future expansions and to be the ones who who pay that debt. And that is why, when we applied for a grant for the lift station over a park drive, for example, it said, we applied for a grant there, and you would think, well, why would we apply for a grant for something where it's, you know, just such a small amount of users, what about the rest of the tax? Well, it's because it, it'll become a taxation issue and generally, because the benefits will be there for, for many, right? So, and I think we need to look at some of these other projects from that perspective of, where's the equity? For, in the, probably the Sunshine Valley water system, given the volume of dollars we're talking about, is one of those projects that we need to talk about. Where is it appropriate that, that the funding comes from? I don't think that conversation is necessarily related to the fee increase for this year. We're not asking under this fee increase for those users to suddenly pick up a bunch of future costs. I think it's a really valuable conversation to have, because it, because you're right, some of those as community development projects will potentially have a big impact on taxation and all the other measures of success in a community, right?
Um, any further questions? Do we have a priority on these projects here that, that are left to do? Is there a priority at all? I mean, if there isn't one, that's fine, just.
Well, the, the items that we have is, we have the grant for the metering system. So that's obviously a priority. And the Clearwater Valley Supply Main, I bet, I think that's also has a grant. And the Strawberry Flats, that doesn't have any secured funding for it at this moment.
Oh, there isn't right now?
Secured, no, but it's on the financial plan for twenty twenty-nine.
But those other ones that are underneath, there's nothing right now that is.
Not on the financial plan.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, go ahead, Counselor Herring. Oh, sorry.
Thank you. Ten percent water, ten percent sewer, and two-point-six on the septic receiving. I'm just curious on the rationale behind that number, short of it's same as the CPI, or is that the reason behind it?
Yeah, the septic receiving, I'll get to it, but it is simply just, it's already covering its costs. So um, and we have reserves for septic receiving that are probably enough to rebuild the plant. Well, maybe, yeah.
Okay, that's good to know.
Isn't there.
Okay, go ahead, Counselor Herring.
So since we've moved past that point of cost recovery and we're looking at building reserves, do we have a specific formula for how we determine how much needs to be in each reserve at a given time?
That is where we need to get to with our asset management plan. Theoretically, an asset management plan should tell you, here's all the assets, here's the replacement cycle. If you, you can make assumptions around how much grants you can get, you know, typically for replacements, it's a pretty low number. And based on that, it'll tell you what your cash flow needs are going to be. And your cash flow needs in it, as you look at, say, a twenty-year cycle, will tell you, okay, by X year, we need to install this, and it's going to be a huge amount of cash, so we have to have built up this level of reserves. So once you get to that point, it tells you based on what those cash flow needs are, how much you need to uh put away and what your actual tax increases you need to get there to that sustainable amount. And I think that's the number that council needs to have put in front of them, which is, what is the sustainable taxation amount? That we know we're good, we're covered off on our assets, we can keep replacing stuff as it breaks. What is that number? So, because that should truly be your target number for fees. Without, until that asset management plan is completed enough, you, and and I think the stage we're at right now is we're kind of, we know we have a deficit, but we don't really know what that total amount is. And we need to try to close that information gap that we have right now. And the other one is not just water and sewer, a really big part of asset management is road, roads infrastructure, obviously.
Yeah.
Yeah, they are listed in order.
Oh, they are listed in priority, okay, thank you.
So, moving forward, if I may, just, this is, this is the sewer projects that we have listed. Both of these lists are Class D estimates. And you can see on this slide what the estimates were versus what the actual costs were. There's quite a big difference there for us. Um, in twenty twenty-eight, we have the siphon replacement, we've kicked that down to twenty twenty-eight. At one point, it was in twenty-six, I believe, but now we've moved it to twenty twenty-eight. And that project currently, I'm, I'm estimating that it would be funded through debt. And then finally, the, the hospital lift station, we currently are calling it the Park Drive project. And that formula has not been finalized. However, for the financial plan, because, because we need to look at that for the financial plan, uh fifty percent uh grant, we've applied for a grant for that project. And currently, I'm estimating a fifty percent debt load on that one.
Any questions? Counselor Sim?
Um, can you just explain what the, what that might look like for debt? Would that debt be just on the users, or would that be a municipal debt overall?
Currently, the debt I've uh projected is currently on the users of the sewer fund. It's not finalized, so that's in twenty-eight. That would have to occur. And I know the project team is looking and researching what our best solution would be for that project.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else, any other questions? No, okay. Okay. Oh, you do, sorry, go ahead.
It's not so much a question as, like, I guess, I'm just trying to articulate. So we're looking at raising these fees, right? And my understanding of what we're kind of saying to the public is, we're anticipating there could be future cost centers in this area. So we're asking you to kick in a little more to boost our savings for the future. Because currently, we're already at cost recovery, right? But we're recognizing that down the road, we might have some more expenses coming, want you to put a little more into savings. Which, you know, to me, that makes sense. I think where I'm seeing the gap is, how are we asking the rest of our community to kick into these savings in the same way? Because some of these upgrades will benefit only the users of the system. You know, the siphon is, is going to affect people who are already linked into that siphon somehow. Whereas other parts of these are going to affect future development, future taxpayers, future, you know, citizens of Clearwater. So I'm just uncomfortable with this idea that we're putting ten percent, you know, to build these savings. And then by doing so, we're putting it on a limited part of the population. And I get that that saves us from, say, having to do a one percent tax raise, where we generate this revenue from people outside of user fees, but as part of a taxing piece. But that conversation, I think, is a valuable one to have with the community. I'm, yeah, I'm really wrestling with this, because we've raised user fees pretty consistently. And my understanding is the philosophy of why we're raising the user fees has been cost recovery-based. But I'm seeing something outside of cost recovery on these charts.
So three hundred thousand dollars in a capital reserve, even just to replace what you currently have, probably won't go very far. So even if we. So even if we added 200,000, now we would have a half a million dollars to the sewer reserve, which is improving. I think a few years ago, we had about 100 and something thousand dollars. So we are improving, we're going down the path. I don't feel that we, like, I think we're going down the path of replacing the capital that we have in the ground. But it's certainly a long ways away from fully funding the capital that we need to do that. And it, if we are user pay, user benefits, user pays, that philosophy, I'm not sure if if we've moved away from that philosophy. Typically, when you're using, if you're a user of the sewer and water services, you should pay for the repair of those and the future capital that you might need. The future growth, that's another conversation that we talked about earlier. So it's quite different. But I think the asset management program, it would be very insightful.
Mr. Johnson?
Thank you. And Director of Finance, could you flip back to the list of what those, that last sewer project list? There's a few things that need discussion on that. I mean, if you were to look at that list and just overall say, okay, that's our plans for the next five years. We're going to spend $19 million and there's 218 users on that currently on that system, and that's the debt they're going to pay. And that would, that's the completely the wrong impression. And and I'm saying that not because, I mean, I know that you guys understand this, but for anyone looking in from the, if the public sees this, some of those projects are very, very dependent on grants. And in addition, they bring in their own user base. So for example, Dutch Lake Expansion. That's a, that's a very significant project. It's on the list because at some point, we may want to be applying for a grant for it. If you apply for a grant for the project, it's got to be in your capital plans in order to be successful with that grant. It can't just be a wish list way out there. But we all, I think we feel that without a very significant funding for that project, it'll, it won't go ahead. I I can't, in my opinion, and and I could be proven wrong, I don't think that the the users who would be served by that system would be willing to fund that to replace otherwise functional septic systems, right? For the most part, probably. So just because it's on the list, you shouldn't be getting the feeling that, okay, we're going to go ahead with these. We're going to figure out a way to do them. And the funding is going to come for, and we're going to hit those users. I think for any significant project, we do have to do the discussion around who are the user base? Where's the equity here? How much of this is going to be for future expansion? And how much of this is just possibly for some of those? It gets beyond the user base's ability to pay. You can't have a septic system that costs so much that people, it becomes their main budget crisis, right? That's not the goal. So and if that is the case, then it forces you to look for more grants or other ways of doing things. So but we need still need, having said that, you need to have a capital plan that you put together with some of your, I guess, their somewhat aspirational goals. And I'm presuming some of those projects will keep sliding along the list until we find a good source of funding. Or until something happens that we say, hey, now we were forced due to environmental concerns or something else that we need to do that Dutch Lake project. But it isn't something that we're planning on doing right now. We don't, it's not in our active plans of, let's figure out the financing for.
Go ahead, Counselor.
So that's a great explanation, thanks. That I think that really helps. I think what I'm I'm struggling with, like, when I look at this list, there's like, as I could count it, around 2.8 million of this is upgrades out of 19 million. The like, the vast bulk of this list list is outside new projects, new development that shouldn't be funded by user fees, right? And so like, I get if that's not what we're intending to fund with user fees, that's great. Let's take it off this list for the sake of when we discuss it in council. Because my worry is, that's what I saw seeing this list, and the public is going to see the same thing when we bring this to council, right? They're going to look at this and say, wow, there's a lot of stuff that doesn't benefit me that I'm paying for. So it would be great to have this kind of separated out as, you know, here's what we haven't funded and, you know, sure, that may connect somehow to user fees. But here's what directly our user fee increase is intended to cover. Because I I think that'll help us articulate to the public why we're putting it on specific users.
That's great feedback.
So what I'm hearing then, where we're doing our reserve, is that what the amount of money that's in there for both water and sewer is enough to replace and to repair and to whatever is necessary for what we have right now, not necessarily for something new?
That's the goal.
Yeah.
We don't probably have enough in those reserves to replace and repair, but perhaps we have a down payment to go to a debt or or 20% of a grant or 80/20, whatever the granting body has requires. So that's really the goal, is to have some reserves so you can contribute to either a grant or debt.
Right. And what I'm also hearing is we need an asset management plan desperately.
And that is a work in progress. But we we need to keep the progress going and actually have some numbers that we can deliver so you have the intel, the intel to be able to say, okay, here's what we're trying to get to.
Just to.
Sorry, I just want to, I just want to go back on the heels of what Counselor Herring is talking about. And what I'm, what I'm, what I'm understanding with the user fees is some language. And it's it's projects versus maintenance and what those user fees are for. And I guess what I'm I'm trying to get my head around is the report said that there was, you know, so what is the timeline for developing and presenting a long-term funding plan for water and sewer maintenance?
Can you repeat the question, please?
What is the timeline for developing and presenting a long-term funding plan for water and sewer project maintenance? So like what with the septic receiving, it is now cost and then we've got plenty ample there. But if we keep having these reserves, are they going to be tied to five-year goals? And I think it goes back to, you know, the charts that you've shown end in 2026. And yet, we've got other budgets. So how do we get some security for our users, what they know that they will be paying over the next five years, and tied it to clear goals and either maintenance or projects, like the why?
I think we have to go back to C E O Johnson's comments about the asset management plan. Without the asset management plan, which also is the maintenance and long-term capital, all we know is that we are continuing to build reserves to so that we can deal with, you know, emergencies or repairs or even having a down payment for the siphon if we need to repair that. But the long-term asset management plan is, in my opinion, key to build what you're asking.
And and I agree. I guess, I guess because our users keep seeing year after year after year increases, what's it, what do we need to do to get that asset management plan in place so that the tax base can see with predictability what's ahead for them? As opposed to this year by year, what's going to be in the mail?
Thank you. So I believe we actually probably need to bring a status update back to council on where our asset management plan is at this point in time. I know for our Director of Operations, that is in his his own business area strategic plan to get completed, that asset management. So I think that we need to bring back a re, a report just saying, what's this, what's the status of this? Rather than us saying, well, we're going to deliver it by X date or it's going to take that much. I think he needs to do some work around that because it is critical information. And I think the users of the systems do deserve to know, A, that we're thinking long-term and have some certainty around what their costing looks like. So we'll, we'll bring back a a status update on that one.
Yeah, I think I would just, and I appreciate the fact that, you know, maybe it's difficult to tie it in. But when I do look at all the incremental increases over the years, I, is there a way to have some sort of, you know, we will have a five-year forecast, you know, by some sort of date? Like, I don't want to be here next year and having the, oh, and we've decided it's 10% again. Like, do you think that we can, you know, mature the way that the Director of Finance is is helping us go by next year so that it will be more reliable?
I think that is a great goal, and we'll bring back that update. And we'll be able to judge based on that how we're going to get there. But that's a really good goal.
And my last one is, is when we do articulate some of these things, I think sometimes we use the word siphon and some of these maintenance projects as though everybody knows what we're talking about. And is there, is this a good opportunity, you know, depending on what happens with this conversation, to give a description of of the things that we're looking at and why it's important for our users? Like, if the siphon goes, you know, is that just a little inconvenience? Or is that going to be a big inconvenience? And giving some rationale about why we're putting these priorities?
Thank you. That is such a great idea that we have this system called Questica.
Oh, we're back to Questica.
In Questica, we have project descriptions. So the point of it is, is that the public can go in to Questica and say, what is this project? What is this siphon? I don't know what, I don't know siphon. And they can go in there and they could look it up and they could see, here's the cost. Here's what's involved with the siphon project. Here's what the impact on them as users will be. That is the point of transparency that the Director of Finance brought that system in for, is to provide that information out to the public. And when it's used effectively, it's it's a really great tool.
Well, on that great news and that summary of this wonderful program, perhaps that is something that could be consistently advised in our new What's Happening column to make sure that we're.
I was going to say that.
Right? And so how do we expand it? And how do we keep directing people? Because it is a very, very proactive tool. But we have to let more people know about it.
Well, you're just full circle, Counselor. That's a great idea.
What's Happening newsletter, Facebook, put it out there so people can go have a look.
In our utility bills.
Yes. Okay, any, oh, you still have to go, don't you, on the septic fees?
So total increases for sewer fees, if it is at 10%, is $5.36 a month. That results to $707 a year versus currently, they're paying $643 a year. And finally, for septic receiving, it's part of the general fund. So it's not a sewer fund or a water fund, it's part of the general fund. We update the bylaw annually, and I'm recommending 2.6% for that. The yeah, the operating costs are about $110,000 currently. Last year, in 2025, we had a budget of $180,000 and currently, we're only at 115. So our revenues have dropped in the septic receiving, so we're a little bit behind there. So we, it contributes just a small amount to the general fund, not a lot. But it does cover its costs and it has significant reserves.
Reserves, so we don't need to worry about that.
No.
Okay, any questions on that? Okay, there's a recommendation that the Committee of the Hall recommends to council to direct staff to increase the 2026 water fees by 10%, to increase the 2026 sewer fees by 10%, decrease the 2026 septic receiving phase by 2.6%. Do I have a mover and a seconder?
So I want to move the motion because I do think it's important that we get this. But I guess I want to amend the motion to include that when this comes back to council, I'd like to see a breakdown.
Thank you.
As requested of, you know, what is paying for current, you know, system users and their needs, right? To the extent we can. I I recognize that we don't have the infrastructure master plan, the the asset management plan that we need to give details. But if we can kind of say, here are the maintenance expectations that we're expecting and here's why we're building these reserves, I think that's going to go a long way towards making the discussion at the actual council table a much more clear decision. So does that make sense? So I guess.
Yeah, I think, I think those are great suggestions. And I feel the same, like, I feel really uncomfortable just voting this on one year, but we've got a five-year financial plan. And I just want to see that the the rate increases are predictable and that they're tied to clear goals. So people know what to expect. And I I think our public understands that you have to invest in maintenance of your your capital assets.
Yep.
I I really feel that that's it. But I think that we could do a better job about saying, and here's what we're going to anticipate. So it is going to be 10% for the next three years or something. But there's got to be a plan in place for for what people can expect from us.
Okay, so do you want to?
So in terms of the, like, the motion I'm trying to make there, I know it's it's a bit of a mess. Do you have a clear sense of what I'm asking for? Or do I need to?
So break down.
Try it again, Counselor Herring. I think you, I think you've got it.
All right, so I want to recommend that the Committee of Hall recommend to council to, how do we say this? Because it's, are we asking for a report? Because this is a recommendation that we bring back this recommendation.
Bylaws.
Okay.
The bylaws. You could add just another recommendation that the Committee of Hall recommends to council to, for staff to bring back a report for, to break down the projects between maintenance and additional services.
Sure, in support of this decision.
In support of it, yeah.
Yeah, I like that, okay.
Separate from this or with this?
I will bring it with.
So go, and that.
Yeah.
Okay, and what she just said.
Okay.
So Counselor Herring, with that, did you want to have, you know, what what I, did you see the need to have what that might look like for a breakdown for user fees in the future? Or do you see them as that's very separate?
Well, my worry is that we we can't have a real conversation around that without an asset management plan. So I think that conversation needs to wait until we hear back on the asset management plan and what the the plan is there. I would love to see that by next year. I think this year, if we need to articulate that we need to build those reserves, I just want to have a really solid business case on, you know, this is maintenance money and next year, we're going to come back with a a vision kind of thing, right? I just don't want people getting the sense that this 10% is aspirational for projects that we don't have a, you know, direct user need for.
We want to be clear.
Yeah, so I would be happy to bring that back. Even I can, we can forecast to 2023, 2030. And you can see how it will build the reserves. And you can see how it could with be drawn down from those, like, let's say, we do the siphon, it would draw that down. So we can see that that plan, that forecast.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah.
And I think that's a really good plan. If we can have it to 2020, 2030, because even if we we take out like the siphon projects, there could be other big leaks or big projects that are unexpected that aren't on this list that we do require the reserves.
And Mr. Johnson?
Thank you. Well, getting it out to 2030, I have to repeat what Counselor Herring said, which is, without an asset management plan as a building block, any long-term vision is not going to be correct. We need the asset management plan. That's the information what says, here's every bit of piping you have, every motor, every everything, and here's when it needs to be replaced. It's great to do long-term projections, but if they're just based on a guess and all that's not really useful to anyone. Thanks.
No, but maybe if I could ask you this, Mr. Johnson, if you can help me, and let's equate it to a family. So if you put, you know, 10% every year into your housing maintenance, and although you know that the roof has got to be replaced at 25 years, the hot water tank at three years, flooring, dishwashers, like, if you look at all of it, you know that there's going to be a general. But then, when all of a sudden, you find that the upper floor, you know, has a bean break or something, that's an extra cost. So I think what I'm wondering is, is can we have a reserve that is is for, we need to be ready should something unexpected, as opposed to here is the schedule of how we replace our the asset? Or is that done in local government?
Go ahead.
I think that's a, I think that's a good overall description of what an asset management plan is. But I think until you've done the work around developing that asset management plan to a fully costed out, timed out state, you don't know whether it's. you don't know whether it's, should we be putting 10% in for regular replacement? Or should it be 15% or 20%? And if you don't know what that number is, if you start with the 10%, all you know for sure is it's probably going to be wrong. So I, I still would, I, I think in the long run, Counselor, your vision of an asset management plan is exactly correct. Here's the stuff we have right now, we need to replace it. Here's the, here's the charge for this that we need to be, that we need to be charging in the dollars we need to accumulate. Anything extra comes on top. For that extra, we need to find out the financing scheme. Is that DCCs? Is that general taxation? Is that grants? That, that's a really accurate description. But I don't want to, I don't want to be too presumptive in putting what those amounts are going to be once we've completed that plan. Because especially when you think about roads and everything else, there's, it's pretty far reaching, right? So that's my two cents worth anyways.
Counselor McKenzie?
Yeah, can you please refresh my memory? Where are we sitting at with our asset management plan timeline? I don't remember off the top of my head, but that was all supposed to be wrapped up.
I, I think we've done a lot of the work as far as identifying the, what we have out there. We've got, you know, we've had to do that for other purposes and for finance purposes, identifying all of our assets. Where we, I think where the work still is to put that, put that together and say, okay, what is the impact on? Or how do we come up with a sustainable amount for taxation? And or fee, revenue generation, be it taxation, fee generation or whatever. But revenue generation, what's the sustainable? We haven't got to that, to that place yet. And the goal, what I say we'll bring back as status update is to really answer that question. What are the next steps? What's it going to take to get there to come up with this? Because for better information for exactly the decisions you're trying to make right now, right?
Yeah, exactly. Okay, thank you for that.
So Mr. Johnson, I've just got one more point of clarity, just to be honest. So I guess what I'm working with, with these, with these reserves is understanding repair and maintenance as one category versus expansion. And is the, is the intent as part of the asset management is to really look at repair and maintenance separate from expansion plans?
Thank you. Yes, that is the goal, to look at those two separately. And to have various numbers for it and potentially various funding, differing funding windows depending what the projects are.
Yeah, and I think that that'll just help users and taxpayers understand the clarity and the vision of, of the inevitable increases and the why.
Okay, we have a recommendation. Do we need it read out because it has changed? Mr. Prime, can you do that?
I was hoping Counselor Herring was going to read it.
Well, maybe he wants to.
All right, so I want to recommend that the Committee of the Whole recommends to council to direct staff to increase the 2026 water fees by 10%, to increase the 2026 sewer fees by 10%, and to increase the 2026 septic receiving fees by 2.6%. And that this information is presented along with a, how do you want to say it? A, a list of upcoming maintenance projects to understand how the reserves will be impacted by this. Not good at wording this stuff on the fly.
Is it two motions?
No, it's, it's an and that.
Is it?
Sure. And that works for me as long as that works for staff.
There's a difference between infrastructure replacement, current infrastructure replacement and the capital.
Those are the two things you're-
These are the repairs and maintenance, the smaller ones are all of the operating.
The operating, yes.
You say the larger parts in the ground that, or pumps or whatever is required to replace the parts. It's like, it's a big piece of, and it's just what you're replacing.
Good.
And these are capital reserves we're talking about, not operating reserves, right?
Correct.
Yes, okay.
Okay, do we have a clear understanding of what the motion is? Okay, do we have a seconder?
Second up.
Counselor McKenzie? Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? None. It's carried. Thank you. Who would like to adjourn this meeting? Counsel Herring? Thanks all, that was great. That's good.
Like to call this District of Clearwater Regular Council meeting Tuesday, November 18th, 2025 to order. I would like to begin by acknowledging that we are fortunate to be gathering together on the unceded Terry as a Simpurs Nation who have been caretakers of this land since time immemorial. Are there any late items to be added? Seeing none, moving on to the adoption of the agenda. Mover and a seconder?
I'll move.
Counselor McKenzie? Counselor Herring? Please tell me Counselor Sim is here. Moving on to Declaration of Non-Conflicted Interest or Pecuniary Interest. Counselor Sim?
Under correspondence.
Right.
The letter from the Ski Hill, I will, I'll excuse myself for that.
Counselor Johnson, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So based on the Declaration of Conflict under 18.1 correspondence, that item needs to be stood down because we wouldn't have a quorum of council to deal with that. So we will defer that to a future meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. TNRD Director Zhao has let us know he can't attend. There's no delegations or presentations. So moving on to adoption of the minutes, are there any errors or omissions? If not, mover and a seconder?
I'll move him.
Counselor Herring?
Second.
Counselor McKenzie. So we're moving on to the adoption of the minutes of the committee meeting that we had earlier today.
Acting Mayor Frizzle? Just the vote on the minutes.
Oh, so did I not say that? Sorry. All those in favor? Carried. Okay, so we're moving on to the recommendations from the committee of the whole meeting earlier. Recommendation one. Mr. Prime, did we have a change in that recommendation?
Yes, thank you, Chair Frizzle. There were the changes to the recommendations, so Recommendation one is amended that it be presented along with a cost recovery ratio report for Recommendation one.
Okay, would we like to have a mover, a seconder on that? With the, the change?
I'll move it.
Counselor Herring, seconder?
Second up.
Counselor McKenzie. Further discussion? Counselor Sim?
Yeah, and I really appreciate the discussion that was had at the committee of the whole, and I appreciate the fact that we have to look at costs. I'm just really not comfortable that the operational costs are only being looked at at this point in time for this recommendation for the 10% to go forward for the bylaw. I'm just, I'm not, I'm not able to do it. I think we saw a big increase. It's a nominal contribution that would be borne by the users, and I am excited about the ratio, but right now, today, I will vote against this particular motion. And I appreciate that our next conversations are going to be very proactive towards it. So it's just for today. Thanks.
Counselor Herring?
To clarify, this one is not the 10% increase. This is a 2.6% increase, is it not?
Yeah, I'm still voting no, because it's still in the user fee, and I'm not comfortable with it. It does not equate to enough money based on our hourly usage. Using that three-year high in the report that was presented earlier to council this year, it would equate to about $3,700. I would like to see a wider view of some of the facility potential and for uses and not to have it onto the user and/or without some reliability for a five-year trend. It's, it doesn't work for me.
Okay, so we'll move on to, all those in favor? And opposed? Counselor Sim? It's carried. Moving on to Recommendation two. Mr. Prime, could you read that out as well?
Yes, thank you, Acting Mayor Frizzle. So the recommendation from Committee of the Whole is that council direct staff to increase the 2026 water fees by 10%, to increase the 2026 sewer fees by 10%, and to increase the 2026 septic fees by 2.6%. And that council direct staff to return at the same time a report of upcoming maintenance projects to understand how reserves affect, are affected by replacement and expansion projects.
A mover and a seconder?
I'll move that one.
Moved by Counselor Herring.
Second up.
Seconded by Counselor McKenzie. Discussion? Counselor Sim?
Acting Mayor Frizzle, I don't know if you want to just do a quick review. We had a really good, robust discussion about asset management plans and why this is going forward and some of the future directions that council and staff will be working towards. I don't know if you want to just touch on that or maybe leave it alone.
Well, we could, but I think if we did move it forward, then staff would bring it back to the next meeting. We could have that conversation then.
Okay, I think suffice to say in making this recommendation is that council is really grateful to staff and their work on bringing forward that asset management, some of the discussions around maintenance and versus expansion projects. And really making it clear so that the user base and taxpayers can understand with some predictability what direction we're moving in and that it is with a lens on keeping an eye on that, our responsibility to maintain these assets for the benefit of all the community.
Any further? Okay, all those in favor? It's carried. Okay, moving on. Nothing in development and zoning, unfinished business, no hearings, no mayor's report. Mayor has away today. Counselors' report, I'm going to move right down to Counselor Herring.
Nothing specific to report. Definitely been having some thoughts about development cost charges and exemptions and how that works with the bylaw. I would love to see, you know, if we could just get a bit of a presentation on that at some point, because my understanding of exemptions for development cost charges is, I'm reading things on the provincial government website that I'm not understanding, basically. So I would love to see what options we have as a council for articulating exemptions to development cost charge bylaws. Just something I've been wrestling with, you know, given some of the things going on in the community.
Mr. Johnson?
Madam Chair, the topic of development cost charges is coming up for the December 2nd meeting, so I will ask them to bring a specific description of what we, what exemptions are available for council related to development cost charges. And the list is quite limited, and it's a, and it's a discreet list. If it's not on the list, council cannot do exemptions, right? So I'll ask for that discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything further? Okay, moving on to Counselor McKenzie.
Thank you, Acting Mayor Frizzle. Not much to report. I did happen to attend the Remembrance Day ceremony at Small Park there a couple of weeks back, week back. And cooperative weather, large turnout as always. And I just want to thank everyone that, from those laying wreaths to those that took their turns on the mic. It's something many people look forward to, a pretty sentimental day, I think, all around for a lot of the community. And once again, just want to thank On Call Service for providing flaggers yet again pro bono. It's, we're fortunate to have them in town with us.
Thank you. And Counselor Sim?
Yeah, thanks very much. And thank you, Counselor McKenzie. I think you really articulately expressed great gratitude. I also want to even expand on that, and it was really nice to see first responders and our local fire departments out in such large numbers. It was really, really respectful. I attended both services at the high school as well as the elementary school, and just really grateful to the work of the teachers and in creating thoughtful moments. And it is, it is somewhat sobering to see the number of veterans that used to sit in the front row to be smaller numbers, and yet traditions are still carried on. Further to that, we had another meeting of the Public Art Committee. We'll be meeting in the first weekend of, first weekend in December and drawing up some plans and some action items and how to engage community and get their input on, on some of the ideas to invigorate and bring color and some place making to the community.
That's it?
I'm going to keep it brief today.
Wow, well, thank you.
I know.
I know. CA report, Mr. Johnson? Okay, so I move on to new business, 16.1, storage for fire trucks.
Okay, thank you, Acting Chair, or Mayor Frizzle. Also wanted to take the opportunity in this report to give an update on the overall budget in the IA project. So the budget numbers that were approved were 294, 532. Our total actuals to date are 261, 100 roughly. So that's about $33,000 under the budget. Some of those underages were the training costs. We didn't have any of those, and some of the equipment was in, came in a little under. There was a couple overages on our IA truck and our bush truck. It was just hard to know the numbers from, in the beginning, right? So that's why we put that contingency in the budget of about 27,000. This report is asking to, or seeking to put the storage shelter down at Public Works, about 30 by 48. It can hold the two trucks, our SPU trailer, our chipper, and Public Works can also utilize it as well for their backhoe and some other stuff that can stay out of the winter and sun. I think that's kind of it. There's a couple of recommendations. One is we need to reallocate some of the money from capital or operating to capital for the contingency, and then approve the purchase of the shelter.
Okay, any questions? Counselor Sim?
Thanks very much. The last comment that was just made is we have to, the motion is to move some operating to contingency, but I think it was also referred that this, this original budget had contingency?
That's correct. So it was moving it from operational to the capital to cover the overages on the two trucks. And then the storage shelter is over the $10,000 threshold for capital, so that's why it's in the capital side of it, not the operational side where the contingency was put.
Okay, and my other question is because the shelter is being used for other equipment besides just this new Fire Smart Initiative, would any of that be cost sharing or is this the actual cost share?
We, we didn't look at it like that because we just decided it was basically enough for our trucks, and since it's at Public Works and there was an extra, an extra amount of room, Public Works could put their backhoe in there to keep it out of the snow. They can't, they don't have anywhere to store it in the winter, and it's, it's a pain for them to clear it off in the snow when they need to use it. So we just realized that it may be beneficial for both to share and the, and the.
Yeah, and I, the thinking's really clever and really smart. I was just looking at, you know, how do we use different money from different budgets, given the fact that this program is growing?
Yeah.
That's okay.
Okay, sorry.
And then the last one is in the original proposal, what had been the original thought about where to store the new trucks?
We were looking to see for the first bit of time to see if we could store them in a commercial space somewhere, rent them, rent it out for the time being. And then the contingency being in there, we kind of were maybe thinking of a shelter or not. And then it just, it worked out to, we couldn't find anything to store, anywhere to store these. And then maybe it was a bit of a, not an oversight, but we didn't quite think fully about it, if I'm going to say that. Well, storing them, right, we just, we thought we would store them at Public Works. Whether they were covered or not was just.
It's better that they're covered.
Yeah. Better they're covered.
Yeah, and I really like the fact that it's large enough to look after some of the other district equipment. I think that that's really smart. And then the final one is, I know that this, this project, you know, came about quite quickly and was really innovative and used some of the Fire Smart money. Was there a final budget that is available online anywhere? Does, maybe that's for the Director of Finance.
This project does have its own initial attack department, so it should be online. I can check after this meeting.
Counselor Sim?
No.
Is there any other questions? Counselor McKenzie?
Hi, thank you. Not too much of a question, just appreciation for staff being proactive. You know how much that iron costs, and increasing the longevity by having a covered area for it will go a long way in the long run. And I think the public being able to see that we're looking after assets is also a huge value, let alone just us that are appreciative of it, but for the community members as well, I think. So thank you for that.
Thank you. Anything further? So there's a recommendation on the table? Could someone like?
I'll move the recommendation.
Second?
I'll second it.
Counselor Herring? Any further discussion? All those in favor? Carried. Moving on to the proposed 2026 Clearwater regatta at Dutch Lake. So exciting.
Thank you. So I don't have a fancy presentation for you guys today, but we'll just quickly go through the, the report. through the report together. The recommendation here is that council endorse the, our revival of the Clearwater Regatta at Dutch Lake. I know the last time it was done was in 2017, I believe. So I did write down two weekends here, however, I will explain a little bit later, too. The Labor Day weekend, I do think, would be optimal, but that's up to you guys, too, for council to decide. Also, that council directs staff to engage relevant community, regional, and provincial partners to support planning and delivery of the event. And that council directs staff to report back with detailed operations plan, budget, and risk safety. So I did write down a brief background here, and granted, I have only been in my position for three years, so a lot of this was collected from newspaper articles, talking to people, and researching online. But historically, my understanding is that the Canoe Regatta was hosted by the District of Clearwater and other partnerships in the community, people helping run it, and featured a mix of family-friendly races, relays, different challenges on the water, and different gatherings. So it did happen last in 2017, and it would be a really wonderful thing to bring back for the community. I know this is something that, since I've come on with the district, I've always thought that it would be amazing to bring back, but it's a big undertaking as well. So I think 2026 is the year that we should be doing this. I think we're ready now. So, a little bit of discussion, I just wrote down some of the core activities that we could incorporate. Also, this is just a, this is just a report to see if this is the direction that we want to go for in 2026. So a lot of this could change and adjust as well. However, a big focus on safety and operations would be huge this year as well. So, things like life jackets, coordinating with potentially Wells Gray Search and Rescue, working with lifeguards, on-water safety, talking to the Clearwater Paddle Society, other operations for the whitewater rafting, just really collaborating with lots of community groups. So I did write down some of the key organizations that I would love to engage with are Tourism Wells Gray, Yellowhead Community Services, Wells Gray Search and Rescue, Rotary, the different paddle groups, so Riverside, Interior Whitewater, Liquid Lifestyles, and the Clearwater Paddle Society. I did not list it, but Wells Gray, the Wells Gray Outdoors Club should be on this list as well. And then also other people that are interested, too. I listed the strategic priorities that this relates to, so enhancing community vibe and partnerships are huge. The financial implication, as you can see, this is just the start of this process, so there is not a financial implication at this time that we have dialed in. And I wrote a couple options here, so the one is to proceed for 2026. So approving the revival, directing staff to plan, and then selecting the preferred date, so Labor Day weekend or August 22nd to 23rd were two dates that I thought of. Or, number two, a pilot scale launch, so hosting a scaled-down regatta. Or three, defer and reassess in the future years pending capacity. Now, I wrote recommended for number one, however, number one and number two are very similar. It would just be one, I feel like we'll be building on this event regardless as years go on, so whether we start off big and then grow from there, or we start off a little bit smaller and grow from there, I think both are good options. And one other note, too, just for the tourism aspect, is I do understand that when it comes to tourism, they'll be more likely to engage if we have events that are bringing in visitors from outside of the community, too. So that just might look different depending on what we have going on, and then we can collaborate more on that as well. If anyone has any questions, I'd love to answer them.
Any questions, councillor McKenzie?
Well, first off, I'd just like to say thank you for reviving this. Remember participating years ago, and it's always a good time, very well attended, and a great way to spend the day down at the lake. But I feel bad that we've been sitting here for seven years, and the last year's stop is before we came in on council, and we haven't done nothing. And we see the, we see the pictures on the wall, and then I just look at past memories, and we never acted on it. So thank you very much for that. One thing I do have for concern, date-wise, for the August date. The only reason being is presumably Cruisin' Clearwater will be coming back to staff to talk about doing a repeat of the show this year down in the same location at the lake. I talked to them this morning, and their, our potential date, almost set in stone they want to do, is the 22nd, 23rd weekend. That being said, as much as it would be nice to have everyone down there, you get a triathlon, bikes, all that stuff.
No, you can't do that.
So it's kind of, that weekend's going to be one or the other. So I was just curious on what dates we were flexible on, if we want to incorporate the summer traffic. Logistically, there's lots to go on, but I'm just curious what other dates we might have for options. Not an answer no, but just something to consider, just congestion-wise for that.
Yeah.
Any further questions? Councillor Sim?
Thanks, and just like what councillor McKenzie said, it is such a fun event. I'm going to echo those same concerns, I believe that that's also the Candle Creek Half Marathon for that 22nd, 23rd, and which makes great use out of the search and rescue. And I just wondered, was there consideration for the following weekend of the 29th, 30th?
No. Councillor Sim, no, there wasn't. I, I was mostly leaning, see, we're flexible to dates, truly. But I know when I was talking to a few different partnerships that might be interested in helping, especially tourism, we were trying to target, we were thinking maybe targeting that September late summer crowd for Labor Day weekend, and having events so people didn't feel like they had to travel out of town for Labor Day weekend, they could have something to do in town during then. But I did not consider the weekend before, so that's absolutely an option as well.
Yeah, and I love the rationale for the long weekend, I mean, you know, you never know until you try and see what happens. But I am super sensitive to the hard work that's been done on that Candle Creek Marathon, and also this great success it was for Cruisin' Clearwater. And that's a lot of congestion along that road at that same time. If there was a way to do a combined thing that included people, but I do know that one comment from everybody last year was, oh my god, this weekend is so busy. So I do like your idea of stretching it. The other one is I also really appreciated having a community meeting before getting too far into the planning, just to get the pulse of, is this something that, you know, the people may want, but do they want enough that they would also help? Because it is a big logistical effort. And then lastly, the past efforts to support this event was possible because the DOC reached out for sponsorships to businesses that worked in Clearwater but resided outside of the district boundaries. So that included a number of our contractors, and it was originally perceived as just a way to include people who do work here and maybe don't have ways to sponsor, and this would be their opportunity. And if that was something to be pursued, I think really you've got to come back with a budget by February, otherwise it's too tight.
Anything further? Councillor McKenzie, you look like you have something on your mind. I really like the whole idea of this coming back, but I really think we need to work with the community to make sure that there's help running this whole thing. It can't just be one entity, because it's huge, and it was so much fun, it'd be great to have it coming back, so.
And I just have one more, if I could, is the other event that I think should probably be added, and I recognize that this is very rough and just going off past information, but it was the scavenger hunt that also garnered, like that was a huge one. And I believe district staff was the inaugural winner of that, so.
So you can put that on your list, because that was a really fun event, and there was a lot of stuff happening. So, what are you asking here?
I'll make the motion that we provide direction to revive the event, and the event be scheduled for the Labor Day weekend, and that council directs staff to include $10,000 in the draft budget.
Councillor Herring, could I maybe suggest an amended, is that there a community meeting, or something be, just to get the pulse of some of these volunteer groups' organization and their capacity for weekend?
Sure, yeah, I think that's a great amendment, sure.
Right, like I think moving forward with the event and then trusting staff to bring back the other pieces, but I think it's the movement of going forward is the most important part of that motion.
So leave everything in there except for the actual date?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think we have, in order to be successful, we've got to hear from our community volunteers and say...
Shout out to them, yeah.
So I would second that motion, just moving forward with the regatta.
Okay, just further discussion. Ms. Kulp?
Thank you. Just to clarify, too, I don't know if I said like a specific community meeting, but I meant that I'd be meeting with community members and partners. That would be to just gain, like, in working with partnerships, so it's not a, I'm not hosting a meeting where I'm inviting everyone to it, I was more just meeting separately with people. I just wanted to make sure that we're all on the same page, or if I was being requested to do something different.
Councillor Sim?
I think that there's a lot of people who have fond memories of this. Their kids might have aged out, and I'm wondering, by having a volunteer of interest that includes partnerships but as well as individuals, you might broaden that scope. Does that make sense? So I can probably list about five people who would love to participate, but they're not necessarily affiliated with anybody that's been on your list. And so because it's a fairly labor-intensive one, and a number of the groups that you've listed, they've already been busy in the summer, how do we expand that volunteer platform? And that's why I would, I would ask for some consideration about doing a community interest meeting with individuals as well as organizations.
Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, and maybe that's actually two separate meetings, maybe Leanne works with the community groups as she suggested, just to get a sense for what timing works best for them, are they going to be able to contribute to it? Because those are really going to be the building blocks for this, for this thing, right? It's going to be a huge effort, and it's going to take the community groups to stand up and want to support it. And based on that, and we can kind of set what that model looks like. And then we could go to, you know, some type of a public meeting, or a discussion after a council, community discussion at a council meeting, or a committee, something where we can engage the broader community after we kind of got laid out what it would look like. Because even the key thing still is all of those groups getting them engaged.
It is, but there's a lot of individual pieces as well. Like, we've talked a lot about those safety features. One of the challenges that I'm guessing would still be in place is that the rafting companies, it's still peak season for them, and having their time away, you don't think it is peak season?
Labor Day weekend sometimes slows down a bit more rather than midsummer, but that being said, every summer's so different depending on water level, so that could just be, that's not a set-in-stone piece.
That's right. And so what I'm suggesting is, is as a part of that, is that we've got a number of skilled and talented people, especially for those safety aspects, who aren't necessarily affiliated with the groups listed, but would be invaluable for the support with the objectives of the report.
So she could be talking to people, groups individually, but have a meeting to pull in the other individuals that would be interested in helping?
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's just, I mean...
So we can pull in everybody that is willing to help?
I just think the more the merrier, that's what I'm coming up with.
I agree with you 100%. Just have to think two different, two different ways, I think.
It's, it's just, it's, you know, you can maybe have people who just do registration but aren't a part of, you know, XYZ group, right?
That's how I got into the half marathon, just through registration.
Yeah, that's right, that's right. Anyway, I just think that it's beloved, and it would be widespread, and to invite as many people as possible, and not just rely on those really reliable groups within our community. They do an awful lot.
You bet. Okay, so I'll move back to the recommendation, and we're, we haven't had a mover or seconder.
Councillor Sim seconded.
But without the date in it, right? Without a date in it, yet?
So just for correction, councillor Herring moved that it was the Labor Day weekend at $10,000, and that was the recommendation as written. Councillor Sim did second that, I know...
No, I only seconded it with an amendment, not that, not that, with the date.
So she doesn't want to have the date included until the organizations and people have spoken on what works best for them? Correct?
Yeah.
Yeah. But you want to add the $10,000 in there? Where's the $10,000?
Last one, bottom line.
Oh, it's on that page, I'm looking, okay, I'm looking at the, perfect, okay. It's not, it's not right here. Okay, so you've moved that, is there a seconder?
I'll second.
Councillor Sim, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Oh, all right.
Oh, sorry.
No, just, just the discussion about those timelines, and especially coming up with budgets, and then being able to reach out to sponsors, and the one, the suggested date in the report, I think is leaving things a little too late. Like, it's got to be done sooner than not.
Work on it right away, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. All those in favor? We did that already. Sorry. Okay, moving on to brine header repair. Mr. Mayor, is that you?
Yes, excuse me. Got a recommendation here that council provide a budget amendment, this project be funded from the North Thompson Sportsplex Reserve. Excuse me, during the regular maintenance this August, a problem was discovered. A refrigeration company corrected it, this work has been completed already. It's a serious problem, if it wouldn't have been repaired, it could have had impact on shutting the arena down for the season, and also having a bad toxic leak into our sewer system, so the repairs were completed.
Any questions? Councillor McKenzie?
Mr. Mayor, just curious, the system was installed in 2000, is that kind of an average life expectancy for these, or is it, you never know what to expect?
I'm sorry, you got to repeat that for me.
Just for this brine header, it says in the report here, the system was installed in 2000, so we get 25 years on that one, is that an average lifespan?
That's the life expectancy, and most of the headers are PVC pipe. There is one section that was cast, or not cast, but steel pipe, and that's the section we had the problem with on the supply line. So with this repair, we also replaced the return line with PVC.
Okay. Perfect, thank you.
Oops, any further discussion? Okay, there's a recommendation that Mr. Mayor already read out. Is there a mover and a seconder?
I'll move that.
Councillor McKenzie? Councillor Herring, further discussion? All those in favor? Moving on to the renewal of the MRDT with Tourism Wells Gray. Mr. Johnson, are you speaking to that?
Thank you, yes I will, Madam Chair. It's a bit of a long report, I will try not to read it verbatim, but I was directed, when we talked about it at an earlier meeting, that we provide a bit, hopefully a bit of an education to the public about what is an MRDT. So if it's, if it's a little bit more detail than you wanted, I apologize, but I will, I will try to speak really quickly to make up for it. Uh, I won't talk to the recommendation yet. There's good, there's one small change suggested for the recommendation that I think is a good suggestion that we'll talk about at the end of the report when I go over what the recommendation is. So I'm just kind of plowing through it, I guess. So what is an MRDT? We talk about it, MRDT used to be called and some people still refer to it as a hotel tax. But MRDT means municipal and regional district tax. It's a tax applied to short-term accommodations. It is intended to support local tourism marketing and program development and projects, specifically to help to enhance the tourism sector. The MRDT in the past has been set at 2%. It is requested and also put out to the stakeholders, which I'll talk about in a little, in a little bit, that that amount be changed to 3%. So 3% is allowed under the provincial legislation for MRDT. It can't be 2.5%, it's got to be a whole percent. So it could be 2% or 3%, but not 2.5%. So the taxes collected by all accommodation providers, and they call them fixed roof providers. So if it's a campsite, there's no MRDT collected, but a fixed roof provider, so cabins, hotel rooms, B&amp;Bs, and even from one unit on up to multiple units, they collect taxes. These taxes are collected along with the PST and remitted to the province. And then the province remits those funds, I understand they take a bit of an administration fee, to the designated recipient of those funds, which in our area is Tourism Wells Gray. Revenue generated, as mentioned, is for tourism-type projects. And there, there was a change in rules, I believe it was in 2018, not exactly sure the date, where some of those funds, that extra 1% could be used for affordable housing. I'll talk about that a little bit later. MRDTs are a contractual agreement that expire every five years and must be renewed. It, it, it's actually an interesting thing because it is the hotel accommod, or the accommodators who, who providing the rooms, who actually get to vote on whether this gets renewed. And in the same way, they also got to vote on whether the increase should be from 2% to 3%. So they have a lot of say in how it's done. This is designed, they do, the, the accommodators do the work of collecting the funds, remit it to the province, and they have a lot of say in how those funds are spent. And, and that's a really good thing. So essentially, the, this, the tourism function supported by this is very answerable to the tourism industry, which, which is really great accountability. So when they actually do voting, it's designated accommodation providers get to vote on the changes. And designated accommodation providers are those that have four or more units, four or more rooms that they're renting out. So, and there's a couple, the voting rules are a little bit complex, I'll talk about them. But of those designated accommodation providers, there's 21 of those in our area. And the area I'm talking about is the municipal, municipal boundaries as well as Area A. It's a joint venture with Area A. And then those designated accommodation providers represent 440 rooms. And 51% is required of those accommodation providers to indicate approval. So Tourism Wells Gray is the destination marketing organization. You often hear the word DMO, Destination Marketing Organization, that, that's what that, what DMO means. So Tourism Wells Gray is being appointed by both the District of Clearwater and the TNRD on behalf of Area A. And the Tourism Wells Gray has a memorandum of understanding with both of those parties, ourselves and the TNRD. Tourism Wells Gray also must meet provincial requirements to be allowed to be the designated recipient. So there's, the province has a set of rules that they apply to, and, and TWG meets those requirements. Tourism Wells Gray operates with a very well-rounded board of directors. Appointments from BC Parks, a SIMF representative, a TNRD rep, a district rep, which is Counselor Bratton, and a Chamber of Commerce rep. There are also elected representatives from accommodation providers, tourism operators, and park permit holders. So really widely represents the tourism industry. Tourism Wells Gray maintains a very close relationship with Park's BC. They attend board meetings, collaborate on marketing and PR campaigns. And Tourism Wells Gray holds a permit to operate as the manager of the Wells Gray Info Center, which is actually owned by BC Parks and is located on a little piece of provincial parkland. The role of Tourism Wells Gray is marketing initiatives, and there's a whole pile there. I'm not going to go through every one of those, but actually, I'm reading in detail. We're at a pretty good time on this meeting. So digital tourism marketing materials, the Wells Gray Discovery Trail Maps, Corridor Maps, Visitor Guides, Visitor itinerary Development. So they work with, develop itineraries for visitors who come in, they say, "I want to do this," or "I've got a day to spend," and they'll make recommendations on how to spend that time here in Clearwater. And then they do other promotional stuff for the specific stakeholders, and they attend trade shows. They also run the Visitor Information Services. That's running the Visitor Info Center, distribution of maps and guides, and they keep staff at the Visitor Info Center who promote the area. And as well, the Visitor Info Center has a gift shop. So that's the role of Tourism Wells Gray. The role of the accommodation provider to collect the MRDT. The stakeholder group of our, we've already talked about four-plus units, voting is 51%. And the voting, there's actually two voting rules. So the voting rules is the majority of the stakeholder group, so we know there's 21, so you'd have to at least have 11 of those to support an activity, or to, sorry, to support the renewal of the MRDT. But that majority also has to include the majority of the beds. So there's a double count. You can't just have half of, half of the stakeholders representing the small units making the decision. Has to also represent the majority, 51% of the bed count. Stakeholder engagement is really critical, and I talked about the accountability of Tourism Wells Gray to the tourism industry. If stakeholders don't feel represented by Tourism Wells Gray, they could vote no on the contract renewal. And if enough of them voted no, the contract with Tourism Wells Gray would be over. So what is the role of local government? So the District of Clearwater and the TNRD have previously designated Tourism Wells Gray to act as a designated recipient for collection and management of the MRDT. And designated recipient is the actual wording used by the provincial government to describe the role of Tourism Wells Gray. In addition, Tourism Service Agreement. For the next five-year cycle, so that starts in November 1st, 2026. And that is, and goes to October 31st, 2031. So that Tourism Service Agreement needs to be ratified between the District, the TNRD, and Wells Gray Tourism Association. And that has not been totally finalized yet, but, but that is the next step in this process. Tourism Wells Gray reports annually to the District regarding its operations and strategic tourism initiatives. That report's actually going to happen in our next, on our next meeting we're planning for December 2nd. The District and the TNRD must provide a letter of support for Tourism Wells Gray to continue as a designated recipient. And council appoints a member of council to sit on the board. So that's the role of local government. Timeline for the renewal, current five-year contract, we already talked about, expires October 31st, 2026. So next year, October 31st. As per the provincial MRDT renewal applications, which include a rate change, so from the two to three, must be submitted at least nine months in advance. So if you're wondering, why are we doing this so far in advance when it's not till next October? That's the reason why. They need to have it in front of them nine months in advance. So, and right now, we're at 11 and a half months in advance. So they don't have that much time to complete the work around the service agreement and the rest of the application process. So time is actually of the essence here. Stakeholder engagement by Tourism Wells Gray. There was stakeholder engagement sessions held on September 29th and October 26th. Some of the data from that is attached. There was also a stakeholder survey done, which was open until October 8th to the accommodation providers and other tourism operators, and the results of that are attached as well. And then finally, the manager for Tourism Wells Gray, Claire, will be coming to report to council, as mentioned, on December 2nd. So the voting results, as of November 5th, 19 of the 21 eligible votes of those entities eligible to vote had, had voted. And the results for the rate increase from 2%, 2% to 3% was 76.2%. So 16 of 21 eligible voters. That 16 of 21 represented 297 out of the 440 available rooms, so 67%. Results for the, the other vote was, do you approve the renewal of the Tourism Wells Gray contract? And 90.5% of the providers said yes, which equals 19 of 21. So 100% of those folks who voted, voted that they approved the renewal of the contract for Tourism Wells Gray. As mentioned earlier, the threshold for either, for any of that voting is 51%. So clearly, they well exceeded the threshold on all the votes required. So there's a couple of other options built into the provincial legislation which authorizes the MRDT. So a couple of the options are, A, that some funding could be contributed to an affordable housing plan. So the incremental 1%, approximately 80,000 to 100,000, could be designated by council as being allocated to affordable housing, although it's, would be expected to receive approval from tourism operators. It should be noted that in some jurisdictions, housing for tourism workers is a hugely critical issue. So that would be Whistler, Sun Peaks, primarily the ski resorts where, A, it's expensive to find housing at all, just due to the cost of housing. But then, when the resorts are running, not only do they have all the workers who need housing, they have all the people coming to the resorts who need housing as well. So really potentially problematic, which is, I believe, the reason why this was opened up to affordable housing. Those conditions do not exist to that same extent in Clearwater. We don't have the same type of a tourism business where it's, oh, they come in at a certain time of year as for ski season or for whatever season. Clearly, we have busier times, but it's not near the same extent of, of that housing crunch. Often, the municipalities have gone down that road, have set up designated housing corporations, municipal housing corporations, what are actively working on affordable housing, and they've got plans for it. We do not have an affordable housing plan, which would support trying to engage in this initiative. The actual voting from the stakeholders showed there was no interest in MRDT funding going towards affordable housing. There was, I believe the vote was zero. They would rather spend the funding on tourism promotion. The, the staff recommendation is that council does not try to utilize the MRDT to fund affordable housing. I, I think there's, would you consider that, that percentage would have to be split between the regional district and, and the, and the Clearwater? I think that the funding dollars out of there could not achieve anything significant anyways for us at this point in time. One other option, and it's actually done by some municipalities, is that they have a municipally operated MRDT. And a municipal MRDT would be that the MRDT would only be for within municipal boundaries. Typically, those are then operated with their own forces. Where those have been established, usually it's as a result of disconnects between councils' goals versus that of the DMO's goals. And in some cases, particularly if it's a large regional DMO, councils have felt there was not enough local content in the tourism marketing. Those conditions don't exist here. Tourism Wells Gray has been a very successful, has a very successful track record of tourism marketing and development and is extremely focused on the broader Clearwater area, including the District and Area A and Wells Gray Park. So its, its focus is already pretty narrow. So staff recommends the continuation of the contract with TWG versus trying to take tourism marketing and development in-house. How does this fit within the strategic priorities of council? I think it's a really great fit. It ticks off on a couple of important boxes. Revenue generation and sustainable finances and taxation is one of our goals. This is the financing tool which provides sustainable taxation to support tourism development and marketing without any taxation impacts on the residents. And when you think about that, that's a pretty hard goal to achieve, right? Where we raise taxation funding, but it doesn't impact our residents. Like, to me, that's a great goal. It supports accommodation providers, tourism operators, restaurants, retailers, and other businesses who all benefit from a vibrant tourism business. Enhancing community vibe, which is really important. The, this attracts a more diverse tourism-based economy. And that results not just in more things for the traveling public to do, but also for the residents. So residents have more recreational opportunities and more chance to get out in the backcountry and do fun things. And then also provides residents with employment. And finally, this is a really outstanding example of partnerships in action. It's an effective partnership with the TNRD, with the tourism accommodation sector, and with BC Parks. Very, and I should have mentioned in the report, but BC Parks is one of the other partners in this, right? So it's, it's a very effective partnership. Financial impacts, there's no local taxation impact. It's expected the increase to the MRDT will add another 80,000 to 100,000 dollars to the revenue to boost the expansion of their, of their program. That means the five-year contribution by the MRDT to tourism in the Clearwater area could be in the order of 1.4 million dollars. That's, that's pretty huge. And that contribution is not just from the local hotels, but all the hotels within that contributing area. Council has the following options. To either support or not support the renewal of the contract with Tourism Wells Gray for another five years starting November 1st, 2026, and to support or not support the increase in the MRDT from 2% to 3%. There's, there's a bunch of attachments that I'm not going to read through, but I'm sure council is taking the opportunity to read through. We'll talk about the engagement process as an example of one of the voting sheets, so you can see what was voted on. And then has a frequently asked questions section on it as well. And I would just like to go over the actual resolutions that we're going to need to, to make this happen. First, that a letter be sent. First, that a letter be sent to the Tourism Wells Gray Association indicating the District of Clearwater's continued support for Tourism Wells Gray as a designated recipient for the MRDT within municipal boundaries for the period already mentioned. That the District of Clearwater supports the increase in the MRDT rate from 2% to 3%. And the next line in that resolution I want to change, where it says that the District of Clearwater will not be allocating funding to be used for affordable housing. I'd like to frame that in a positive after receiving some wise advice. That the District of Clearwater supports all of the funding raised from the MRDT to be used for tourism initiatives. And the next, the next that is that the tourism service agreement for November 1st, 2026 to October 31st, 2031, between the District of Clearwater, Tourism Wells Gray Association, and the TNRD be approved once that is being finalized. And finally, that the mayor and chief administrative officer be authorized to execute that agreement. Thank you, council.
Any questions? Would someone like to move their recommendation? Counselor Sim? Second, Counselor Herring? No, no further discussion. All those in favor? That's great. Thank you. So moving next on to 16.5, the Redip Rural Economic Development and Infrastructure Program.
Thanks, Counsel Frizzle. So the report that we have regarding the Redip grant, the report itself outlines an application to the province to support connecting Clearwater's community through a wayfinding and signage project. The goal of the project is to improve visitor navigation, to strengthen our community's identity, and to better connect the three main commercial and tourism areas. Those ones have been identified as our Highway 5, Traffic Circle, the Ordner Thompson Highway Shopping Square, and the Historic Strawberry Flats. The wayfinding was identified as in many of the planning documents, including our community economic development strategy, as well as in the 2024 wayfinding audit. And these had been started this year as well with the phase of putting some new signage in our parks. The project itself here would build on the work in moving towards the community in a more cohesive and visitor-friendly signage system. The application itself is to be focusing mainly on completing, design, the fabrication, and installation of new gateway signs, directional signage throughout the community, and interpretive panels. It also includes a collaboration that we'd like to see with SIMP First Nation to include some of their language on signs, as well as alignment with our new OCP and the transportation plan to ensure that it will fit a long-term vision. The total cost of this project is 342,550 dollars. We're requesting that the Redip grant we would be receiving is 273,050 dollars. The district's contribution then would be 69,500 to be spread over the three years, which would then be funded through our reserves and taxation. The investment here would be supporting our project management, consultation, and the installation work on the signs throughout the community. The recommendation here is for council to approve the Redip application and the district's contribution that's required for our next phase of the project.
Okay, any questions? Counselor Sim?
Thanks very much, and it's certainly been great to see the new signage that it's gone up. It really gives a very positive impression of the community. The Sportsplex one is terrific. I'm sure there's a million families are going to be grateful that they don't have to look around for the smokestack on how to get there. I'm wondering if you could give some more tangible examples of what some of these new signs might look like. It's quite a large price tag, and I'm not sure what the vision is for it.
Thanks, Counselor Sim. So the signage themselves would be placed throughout the entire community. So this would be signs, including as you're coming into the community for new main signs, as well as signage that would be at each one of the commercial locations, indicating which businesses and areas we have for activities as well. So anything that's throughout the traffic circle, leading up to the Wells Gray Park, as well as then connecting some of our signage that leads down to the Strawberry Flats, where we have other businesses to be identified, as well as connecting the signage so that people know where coming off the highway, where there is Dutch Lake, and that there is a commercial center just past there as well. So trying to put in some of the directional signage, as well as some of the interpretive signage about those various areas in the community, just to give it a sense of community vibe, and that there is a connectivity piece to it, that kind of pulls into what we saw for the signs earlier this year with the parks and the trails, so that there would be more of a community map that designates those different areas and helps the visitors move around. We're just lacking some of that signage to connect those areas.
So to maybe try and draw that down a little bit more, so would an example be Dutch Lake, turn left in 2 kilometers?
Correct.
All right, or Sportsplex ahead 2 kilometers, turn right?
Yes, that would be part of the directional signage that would be included.
And then what you're also talking about, some of those larger signs would be, there used to be the, often the pull-off, and you would get that, that big map of, you know, here's, here's the different commercial areas, recreation areas, so a larger depiction, very similar to the trails, that map that you had created, but it would be more about the livability in the commercial areas. Is that right?
That's correct.
Okay, and then my last question is, is the, can the Redip grant be submitted without that extra amount being required?
So no, the grant itself will require a district, district portion of the 69,500, of which 40,000 would be coming from our reserves for economic development, and the remaining 40 to be done over those three years. But we cannot opt out of having that portion that's required.
Has this grant been submitted already?
Yes, we put in an application.
Anything else? Counselor Herring?
So, like, the district contribution on this makes a lot of sense to me. I think one of the challenges that I run into when this stuff happens, like, when I see new signage costing 342,500 dollars, that seems like a lot. You know, I recognize things cost a lot more than you think in local government, always, when we look at the roads and stuff like that. But, you know, I see businesses that are now defunct, that have signs on the outskirts of town. I see large-scale signage all over the community that comes at a much cheaper price tag, right? So I'm just trying to get my head around, why does the signage project come in at 340,000, which is, to me, that's infrastructure-level money, I guess, is how I would put it.
Yeah, so there is a portion of that that has to go into some of the consultation. The signage itself is quite costly when we start adding up every piece of it, as well as the installation. And then, like you mentioned, it is part of kind of that infrastructure, which is why we had looked with some of the Redip program staff about including something that was more so towards the signage and the needs of the community right now, versus trying to do something that's kind of that revitalization project. This is more so tailored to the needs of what we already have been basing kind of our audits on, looking at what's needed. As much as it seems like a big price tag, it does add up really quickly with all of those design pieces and to get it completed. But, but the 342,000, as much as that's a big price tag, a large portion of that is grant-funded, which is the 242. So we, we wouldn't be putting that much ourselves.
Thank you.
How many signs does that, are you talking about? Approximately?
We're looking at approximately 35 large signs and an additional 25 wayfinding signs.
And that also includes, the cost also includes the installation of those signs?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Counselor McKenzie?
By installation, that's contractors, or is that Public Works will carry those out, such as the ones late summer?
There's a combination of both.
Any further questions? Okay, there's a recommend, oh, sorry, Counselor Sim.
With the application, was there a visual description that was attached to it, so what this might look like a sample? Or was it just exactly what you've done, is just explain the fact that with this project, it would maybe finally answer the question, where is the town?
So the district actually has a wayfinding sign study that has been done, and that wayfinding study was done over this last year. So we're, and part of that included some discussion around the visuals and kind of what these signs look like, where they go, and what you try to capture with it. So this follows along with the wayfinding signage plan, which is actually why the, the funders are very interested in this. It's not just a one-off, hey, let's put up a bunch of signs. It's part of a plan that, that was a funded plan, and this now is trying to activate that funded plan.
So these signs will be consistent with the signs that were put out in the last year? Yeah. Yeah, thank you. Okay, anything further? Okay, there's a recommendation on the table. Someone like to move it? Counselor Sim, second?
No second.
Counselor Herring? Further discussion? All those in favor? Carried. Okay, moving on to no bylaws, we're going to be moving the correspondence Ski Hill letter to the next meeting as we have, Counselor Sim would have to recuse herself, and that would leave us without quorum.
Can I just ask a question on that?
Sure.
And maybe I can't, in which case, no problem, because I have already declared a conflict.
No, can't ask a question.
She can't?
No.
No? Okay, you can't, apparently. Sorry.
Respectfully, no.
No, no, and that's okay. That's why I thought I would, I would just ask. So thank you, asked and answered.
So moving on to correspondence with information only, just stop me if there's anything you want to discuss, and that's the Housing Reset Group Rebuild M216.
And one item, pardon me, Acting Mayor Frizzle, I apologize, the item 19.2 wasn't added as an attachment, actually. I do have copies here.
There's a letter from Minister Jody Wickens on Adoption and Permanency Awareness Month. That is being handed out right now. You will have to read it out? Okay. Mr. Prime's going to read out what he just handed out to council.
Madam Chair? The first letter, though, pertaining to the housing, if I could speak to that for just a little bit?
Certainly.
So this is actually, despite the fact that it looks like a, a bit of a dry request, it's actually quite important.
Yeah.
So, and the issue here is, there's a private members bill being, working its way through the provincial government, which tries to limit professional reliance by municipalities. And it's hard to get the gist of it, but, and it is more of an issue in larger urban centers, but still an issue here. So the issue is, sometimes in support of development, very often in support of development, we will say, we need a letter from an engineer supporting, whether it's land, the geotechnical aspects of a development, or other aspects of a development, we want a letter from a professional saying it's okay to do that in this spot. Well, interestingly enough, typically, the developer hires that professional. So when the developer hires a professional to do that, they bring us back a letter, which is stamped by whatever their profession, they're typically engineers of various varieties. And that's professional reliance. And this private members bill is saying, that's enough. That's enough to municipalities and approving folks should be able to rely on those letters. Well, in my own career, I've seen times where you get a letter from one professional, and it's like, you don't agree with the findings. And if you don't agree with the findings, or they're not consistent with findings from, that you've previously seen on the same issues from other professionals, then the response from the municipality would be to say, hey, let's send this out for a peer review by another professional. And they would, that would be at the expense of a municipality, so it would have to be worthwhile to justify spending those funds. But that peer review would either then agree or disagree with that first professional, and would form the basis of some decision-making process for council. What this bill is trying to do is say, no councils cannot go out and seek a peer review unless the province specifically authorizes it. The problem with, and the rationale behind that, is a good rationale. The rationale is to speed up housing, so developers aren't caught between this endless request for, oh, we don't agree, get another, we're going to hire another professional. But it kind of misses the point. When you do that, usually it's because you've seen an issue that you don't agree with based on other professional reports you've seen in the past. So I think it's an important point. I believe that council should send in a letter saying, we believe that municipalities should maintain the right to have peer review, professional peer reviews done at our discretion. The, not just the right around peer review, but where a lot of, some of the correspondence I've seen on this, and some of the language around it, is it's another example of the province getting involved in local decision-making around housing. We've seen a lot of that. We've seen that with housing, we've seen that with zoning, we've seen that over and over and over again. And it's felt that this is just another example of that, which is why UBCM is taking a stance on this as well. So I actually believe this is one that I would suggest that council sends a letter in, and I'm happy to draft that letter, and then sends that to UBCM and whoever they designate on here.
Any discussion on that? Counselor Sim?
Just to say thank you very, very much for that, because it was, it was a bit strange, and that, that thoughtfulness that you've applied and helped us understand, thank you. And I would be really interested in having that letter. Do you need a motion to that effect?
Yes, please.
I'd like to make a motion to direct staff to draft a letter to the UBCM to address the issues in said title, letter.
Second on that?
Second up.
All those in favor? Yes, thank you for that, because I made, I made it much clearer. I read it and thought, this doesn't sound good, but I wasn't really sure why, but so thank you for that. And then the letter from Minister Jody Wickens.
Yes, thank you, Acting Mayor Frizzle.
Oh, sorry, just one moment. Oh, you opposed, sorry, I'm sorry, I missed that. Write that down, okay. All right, go ahead on the next letter, Mr. Prime.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Frizzle, and I apologize for missing this as the attachment. Interestingly, this one does actually hit quite close to home for me, as someone who grew up in foster care from the age of five onwards, so I'll try to keep it together while reading this. Dear Mayor Blackwell and Council, as Minister of Child and Family Development, I am honored to proclaim November is Adoption and Permanency Awareness Month. I invite you to celebrate the families who have welcomed children and youth as permanent members of their family, and ask that you keep, that you help promote awareness for children and youth who are still waiting for permanent homes. Adoption and Permanency Awareness Month is about celebrating the devoted families created when people open their hearts and commit to sharing their lives with a vulnerable child or youth. A permanent family environment provides a solid foundation for lifelong connections to community and culture, opportunities to thrive, and all. to community and culture, opportunities to thrive, and all the support these young people need along the way. Permanency is transformational for everyone involved. The emotional and social impacts of belonging can last a lifetime. That is why Adoption and Permanency Awareness Month is also about recognizing the children and youth who are still waiting for permanent, stable, and nurturing homes. I encourage you to share the following resources with your community members who are interested in becoming an adoptive or permanent family in British Columbia. Adopt BC Kids, an online portal that provides British Colombians wishing to adopt children and youth from foster care with information and guidance through their adoption application. There's a few more links here. The Ways to Adopt in British Columbia website provides information on adoption in British Columbia, such as infant adoption, relative, and stepparent adoption, and adopting a child or youth from another country. BelongingNetwork.com, formerly Adoptive Families Association of BC, provides information and support services for families who wish to adopt now or in the future. And AdoptionBC.com, a detailed and comprehensive guide to additional adoption resources. Please join us in marking November as Adoption and Permanency Awareness Month to recognize all the individuals who have grown their family and their hearts through adoption, and to all those who have done so in the future. On behalf of the government of British Columbia, thank you for your continued leadership in supporting adoptive families in the community. Sincerely, Jody Wickens, Minister.
I would like to see those links on the website, and sort of promoting it a little bit for this month as well. Not just the links, but just saying why they're, why they're there. Do we need a motion for that?
It certainly never hurts.
Certainly never hurts. Well, I don't know if I can move it from the chair, so. Councillor Herring, second up. Councillor Sim? All those in favor? Thank you. All right, so moving on to questions from the public. Nothing today. So we have to move into in-camera. So I recommend that the meeting be closed to the public pursuant to Sections 91E, the acquisition and disposition or expropriation of land or improvements if the council considers that disclosure could reasonably be expected to harm the interests of the municipality. So I have a councillor McKenzie, seconder. Councillor Herring, all those in favor? We're in to in-camera. Coming back, what time is it?
Recession for eight.
Till 3:30? Okay.